All right, let's start the planning board meeting for October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty two. And we'll start off with a a roll call of attending members. I'll just go in the order of who I see. Linda Miller.
Here.
Andrew Boardman.
Here.
Mark Giddings. You're muted, Mark. Okay.
Here.
Great. Sue Felsham.
Here.
And I know Haley Orbital is not going to be attending today, and I'm Nathan Bossett. I am here. So let's dive right into first agenda item for tonight's meeting. And that comes to a ZBA recommendation regarding the Concord middle school to replace the existing Sanborn middle school at eight thirty five Old Marlboro Road, parcel thirty ten dash two dash one. And who do we have? Who do we have? Who the?
Stephen Treska.
Hi, Stephen Treska with Niche Engineering, and we also have Mike Dowhan and Jen Susie from SMMA, The Architects, on the project. How are you?
Good. The floor is yours.
Excellent. So we had, we opened our hearing in September thirteenth, and then we subsequently continued and then continued again to get responses from town staff. We subsequently received comments from engineering, NRC, and CPW. We also went to CPW Concord Public Works on September fourteenth. We reviewed the impervious cover associated with the project because we were over the fifteen percent. We discussed this with CPW, talked about our stormwater management for the site and reasons why we couldn't go or get to the fifteen percent threshold. CPW voted unanimously to approve the project as presented to them with the increase impervious area of about sixteen point three percent for the site. And so that's one of the recommendations that's in front of you as well. We did receive, I believe, two comments, maybe three comments from in a butter, which we responded to, and those were associated with parking and circulation, stormwater again, and then the third one was, I can't remember, maybe Mike, you couldn't help me with that one, but then, but we had provided responses to those comments back to the board through Elizabeth. And I believe that's the, that's where we stand today. And I don't know, I'm trying to open up the PowerPoint, and it's giving me a hard time today to flip through, but I think we're at a point where we're looking for trying to compile the recommendations, response to comments, which I think some of them will be conditioned, but didn't know if there were other questions or comments from the board that we could respond to tonight, but then looking forward to either potentially closing out tonight with recommendations to the zoning board, or if we need to continue to your next hearing in early November. And Elizabeth, I don't know if there's anything in particular that that you wanted to touch us to touch upon, or?
So the board can, we can go through my report and you can just respond to the different highlighted items. I apologize, I wasn't actively listening because I did just see the water and sewer division late this afternoon did provide an updated comment memo, which I can address when you get to that point in the report, if you'd like, Nathan. You're muted.
Yes, that would be, that would be good.
So does that work for you, Steve?
Yeah, yeah, that works.
So I can?
Did you want me to share your report on screen?
No, I can, I can.
You can do that, okay.
I think I can. Yeah. Okay, everybody can see the report? Yes. I think the first item for the board's discussion and consideration deals with the requested waiver to the thirty-five foot height limit. So the applicant has provided justification for that height limit, given the existing topography of the property. So that would be the first item that the board would need to discuss and include in their recommendation to the Board of Appeals.
Yeah, so I'll start off. I looked through this and I remember from the, and the meeting last time around. I, I mean, I don't have any problem with what they're proposing in terms of request for a variance on the height. It's fine. I'm okay with it. I don't know if anybody on the board has any opposition to that.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it. I don't see any alternative.
Now, as I see it, the stair tower is the highest portion, and it will have a height of thirty-seven feet, five and a half inches as its appearance from the front of the school, and I'm totally fine with this. I don't know if we need to add any notation or condition that our approval is for the height variance being for the sake of the stair tower, and it wouldn't allow the building, for example, to be redesigned, to be higher in other portions and still achieve our recommendation in favor, but that's my only comment. I'm fine with it as designed.
So, so the, the, the height of the the height of the actual building.
Oh, it's much taller, I know.
On the backside is, yeah, is greater than thirty-seven and a half inches.
No, but it will appear to have a height of thirty-seven and feet, five and a half inches from Old Marlboro Road.
For just the stair tower.
For just the stair tower, exactly. And I'm totally fine with this. I just wasn't sure if we needed to add a note or anything that our recommendation in favor, assuming that we do, is for just the height variance on the stair tower.
But it's, it's not.
Oh, excuse me, you're right. I'm praising this very badly. I mean, for it's for the plans as submitted, basically, I guess is the shortest way of saying it, and not approving a change of the plan so that more of the building would be raised in any other way above or any of the building, even the stair tower itself made taller.
Okay, so I think I, I think I understand that the, the height of the given elevations on the approved plans is what you're recommending the waiver to the height be, and that the rest.
Thank you. Even though the. You can phrase that so nicely. That's exactly what I mean. Okay, I can, I can, I can wordsmith something in there to that effect.
But isn't all this approval done based upon the plans as submitted? And if they change the plans, doesn't that void the approval?
So the special permit does get issued specifics to these plans. There is always the opportunity for there to, the building commissioner, who usually consults with me. There may be some minor modifications that are found to be in substantial conformance.
Right.
So, you know, maybe, you know, you know, the placement of windows may change.
Right, I get that.
The sidewalk may be in a different location, but is it?
The height of the building would be a substantial change.
Yes, changing the height of the building would be a substantial change.
Yeah.
But if the, if the floor plan was modified and the stair tower moved to a different side, maintain the same height, you know, that might be something that we would find in substantial conformance.
Okay.
But yes, the, the, the heights and the elevations that are being proposed would be what's on the approved plans. Okay, so I will, I will write that up.
Linda, were you gonna say anything? You look like you were gonna say something earlier.
I, I just had, I had two questions, and one is similar to what we just were talking about. And that is, for many other projects we've looked at, there's a possibility for the building department to come and at, at the site, take measurements and make some adjustments, but it seems to me that this is a a much more substantial project than most of what we see, and that there's probably less tolerance, you know, for, for making changes once you're on the site. So my question was, how accurate are these estimates in terms of thirty-seven feet, five and a half inches? Is that like plus or minus three inches, or is it, you know, what, what is the? It is just what it is.
It, it, it is what it is, and there will be a, a condition that has, similar to the condition that the board placed for the Concord Children's Center, that the spot grades and the foundation will need to be surveyed before framing begins to confirm the elevations. And then, once the framing is done, the, the elevation of the the height will have to be surveyed and confirmed again before, basically, enclosing the structure, once the framing is up. So there'll, there'll be a similar condition to make sure that these elevations are maintained, and they're not exceeded.
Second question is just more informative for me of, of the architects and, and engineers, and that is, given that we have this issue of impervious area and also cost associated with the, the middle school. If we had, had the opportunity to have a more lenient or, or height restriction, could that have changed either of those parameters in your design? And again, just wanting to educate myself on, you know, do we need these height restrictions to be as tight as they are? What are we giving up? And I wonder if you could just opine on that.
Is that a question for me or for?
No, for the, the applicant. If they'd be willing to, to share any information.
This is Jennifer Susie. I'm the architect. I, I just want to understand your question, make sure I'm understanding it. So if the height restrictions were not as restrictive, would that have changed the design, or if, given the cost issues that we're having, is that going to impose any restrictions on our design? Is that? I guess I would, okay, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think so. It's really, is the height constraint, if, if that had been something you could have worked with in terms of adding height to the building, could we have come in with a lower cost building or a building that didn't require you to go over the limit in terms of the impervious area?
So I would say that the height of the building probably didn't have any, you know, the height restrictions wouldn't have impacted the overall site area. I would say if we had to work within the constraints of the height of the building, keeping it lower than thirty-five feet, it probably would have impacted the impervious area more. Say if we had to reduce the height of the building to a two-story building, still maintaining the program required by the educational program, we would have had to expand, we would have had to expand the footprint of the building, which would have impacted negatively the impervious area restrictions. So I would say by going higher, it's, it's, it's helping the overall impervious area of the site.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Do we do continue?
Yes.
Okay. So the next item, and this is for the applicant to provide additional information regarding the use of chemicals, pesticides. I'll turn that over to Steve and Jennifer.
Yeah, and or Jen, did you want to say? So, so we understand the requirements here, and we're basing this plan on, on chemicals and and cleaning products within the school, based on the CCHS template that was created a number of years ago. And so we're continuing that, and so it would follow the same guidelines or the same requirements that were implemented in that plan for CCHS would be implemented here for the Concord Middle School, obviously with appropriate updates as needed. And I know, Jen, if you want to, and so we're putting that together, and Jen is, is overseeing that, and she can explain more if needed.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, that's basically it. And I don't want to put, we do, I see that Russ Hughes, who is from the school, is on the line. I don't want to put him on the spot, but if he's, you know, wants to talk a little bit about, you know, any of this, the proposed potential chemicals, maybe that would be stored at the site, if that's different from the high school, if he's willing to weigh in on that.
Yeah, no, you, you're not putting me on the spot. I can tell you what we do at the high school.
So Russ, can I, can I ask that you just identified yourself?
Yeah, I'm Russ Hughes. I'm the facilities director for the Concord Public Schools.
Thank you.
And so looking at this here, we, we do not store at the high school any chemicals, pesticides, herbicides, or fertilizer. We outsource all that. So for the athletic fields. So if we were to do that in the middle school, we would do the same.
So would there be any, is, at this point in time, is there anything that's known that will be different for the middle school than there would be for, currently for the high school?
No.
Okay.
No.
So as far as the, inside the high school, how are chemicals handled? Is it just regular household cleaners, or?
Well, because we're a school, all of our cleaning chemicals are non-toxic. And, and like I said, as far as fertilizer for the athletic fields, that's all outsourced. We, we don't do that work. Usually that's done by a licensed professional for something that size.
Well, the language of the bylaw says in quantities greater than those associated with normal household use. I find that a little bit vague. A school is obviously not a normal household, but if we considered it to be equivalent to a multi-unit apartment building in size, then possibly that would count as normal, the house, quantity per, of cleaner per area of a normal household, but.
Well, a house, a household is a single, is a single unit, a household, normal household use. So it's talking about a single household, not an apartment building. So it's specifically.
Clearly, this school then uses a great deal, a great, much more quantity of materials than a normal household.
Correct. So that's why the applicant will need to provide a, a written response, you know, to this. You know, it's, and, and I'm sure, you know, the high school has something already put together that can be submitted as far as, you know, the, the cleaning chemicals used in the school are all non-toxic. Because this property is on onsite sewage disposal system right next to the town well. You know, that's the reason for this section of the zoning bylaw. I don't know if any of the classes, it's been a very long time since I had a kid in middle school, so I don't know if any of the classes, whether they even have some type of chemistry class, or whether there's certain chemicals used in classes. So just a, a written response to this. And understanding that the pesticides or herbicides or fertilizers used for the athletics fields is, is a company that, you know, so the chemicals are not stored, you know, on the property. But I, I think just a written response for, for this is all that's needed.
Yeah, I think if it's aligning with what is already in place elsewhere and other schools in the town, seems like relatively straightforward response to send. Any other comments from other board members?
Is the high school in the groundwater?
Yes. The high school is also in the groundwater conservancy district for the, the well, town well off Walden. So as I mentioned earlier, the you have to tell me, are you still looking at the, my report?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't change whenever I bring something else up. So the Water and Sewer Superintendent did provide updated comments. And the applicant did address their previous issues and concerns.
Yeah, and sorry, Elizabeth, if I may, I, I, and Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that we have not received, so we, we addressed the concerns from DPW or Public Works, and then also comments from Water and Sewer, but I, as stated in the, in the memo, we have not received an updated response from the superintendent. And as I said, yeah.
Just came at, at four thirty today.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
I haven't, I haven't forwarded it to everybody yet. So I'm just quickly scanning through this, and there are no outstanding issues and concerns from the Water Sewer Superintendent. And there are additional just recommended conditions should the board move forward with recommending approval. But that will be posted to the website tomorrow and sent to the applicant. But just quickly looking through this, there are no outstanding issues and concerns.
Great, thank you, thank you.
The next is the comment from the Natural Resources Director regarding the impervious coverage. Just down the street is the Peabody School, which the front portion of that property is also in the same zone two for the public well is the Sandboard School. So she is just making the recommendation that as the future reuse of that school, that the project look to offset the increase in the impervious coverage for this project at that site. But in, in general, she did not have any issues and concerns with the project.
And that would just, that's not a a strong recommend, like, it's not a required recommendation, it's just a, a thought, basically.
It's, it's, it's her recommendation to, you know, to offset the requested waiver for the increase in impervious coverage at this site. There is, there is this possibility to, to balance that offset in the future at the Peabody School.
Yeah.
We have no idea what's happening with the Peabody School site. For all we know, it could be sold by the town to a private party. How would we pass along the requirement if we so chose?
It becomes a standing condition for this special permit that the, you know, that the property owner agrees to as far, as part of this special permit. And
As part of the other special permit, the one that would be for the other school?
No, we don't know what permit is going to be required for that. So it, it just becomes a condition of this special permit, and the property owner is made aware that that's a condition for granting of this waiver to the impervious coverage.
So we would put into this special permit recommendation that we require, would it be almost like putting a lien on the other property that no matter what happens at eight? With this school, that, that other property would later have this condition on it?
Yes. Okay, in exchange for this, in, in exchange for this requested waiver. The property owners understand that.
Right, and you would somehow record for, so that it wouldn't get forgotten when something happened with the other property.
We'd have to figure that one out, yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Would have to be deed restricted on the other property?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I'd have to think about how that gets enforced.
My only thought is that I considered it, but I don't know that it's appropriate at this point to require us, that, that we would require the school to encumber another surplus property for the purpose of this. It seems, it seems like the granting of the, the exceeding fifteen percent impervious lot coverage isn't extreme enough for us to then try to recoup it somewhere else in a different, it just, on a different property, just because we know that one happens to be, you know, in my mind, it would be like, if you're doing work at Alcott School and said, great, but you need to make the high school also, you know, like, they're not equivalent, so I would just say this is a great idea, but it seems really complicated and probably not appropriate. That would be my thought.
For one point three percent.
Yeah, exactly. That's, because then, 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 then it turns around, and there's a project everybody loves, but now, all of a sudden, it's that project's one point three percent too large, and now you can't get what you want because you've already dropped it. You know, it, it just, it seems, it, it's a great idea, but it just seems complicated to me.
It's, it, it is, it's just a, a recommendation, but at least now.
We've considered it.
Well, at, at least it's now out in the public realm and something that people are aware of and can be part of that conversation at that time.
I wonder if there's any other land publicly owned in the groundwater conservancy district that could be immediately permanently restricted from development, some small amount of land equivalent to one point three percent of the eighty-five Old Marlboro Road site, so that it can be taken care of at the same time, although not as part of the special permit application, and there would be no need to either place a deed restriction on the Peabody Middle School, or, or as Andrew said, what if there's another proposal there, but it's also one point three over, and then we pass along a recommendation for that one, that some other property would have to be two point three percent below.
So I'm, 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 I'm getting the, the sense from the board that while this is a great idea, the complexity of that is not one that that we want to try and grapple with, but it, it, at least it's now out there in the conversation. Um, and people are aware of it, so um.
Yes, perhaps someone could think of another alternative. And I don't necessarily meet a member of this board, but there are a lot of fine people in town, maybe someone can think of something.
I'm sure. Um, I do know that the applicant is um. Uh, currently addressing the issues and concerns in engineering's updated memo. Um, so I'm confident that there, that that is something that they can do, there were no um, showstoppers or. Si- very significant concerns that they raised, um, I just. I think there just needs to be an exchange of information uh, one more time for them to address some concerns that were raised. And um, ultimately, the board needs to make a recommendation on whether the. Waiver to the impervious coverage uh, should be granted, not. And then town staff has um, already developed various recommended conditions of. Approval should the planning board move forward with a positive recommendation to the Board of Appeals. You want me to keep going, Nathan?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, the next is the request to relieve from parking. And we got a typo. Um. There wasn't a lot of information provided to, for the justification for the relief uh, from parking. Um, but I believe the applicant has additional information. Uh, that they want to go over tonight and then we'll provide that additional information uh, for the record for the board to review. I'll turn it back over to either Jennifer, Michael, or Steven.
Actually, I'll just, uh, I think Michael will, will take this and if I. Uh, Mike, can you share um, screen with the image that you have? So the first one that Mike is, we'll talk about is the um, information on the number of cars. That can be accommodated within the, the site circulation. Um, and then we'll continue the discussion from there, do, do you want me to share a screen, Mike, or are you good with it? Oh, I'm happy to share a screen, I got, I have it ready to go.
Almost there, yeah, I'm almost there. Mine's a little slow, let's see, guys. Let me know if you can uh, let me know if you can see my screen, please.
I can see it now.
Aces, okay, yeah, so we will start with the comment about uh. Parent uh, pickup vehicle queuing onsite, hopefully this is larger, if I need to zoom in more, I'd, I'd, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, please do, if this is a slide, if you put it into um, slide mode, that might actually effectively increase the size. On my screen, I'm seeing large black and white ba- black banding on the top and bottom, showing that your screen is very wide. Uh, so that would fix the problem.
Well, that sounded like an excellent fix, unfortunately, I had absolutely no idea what you're talking about, so. So I'm just gonna try.
Better too.
How, how's that, is that better?
That's good.
All right, all right, excellent, sorry about that, uh, so yeah, so for, for afternoon. For afternoon uh, pickup queue. Um, we're trying to be a little conservative with this as always, we don't want to over, overstate what we think we can do, so um. We run a um, auto uh, 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 software program called Auto, Auto Turn, we run an auto turn circular uh, simulation. Uh, for the, for the, for the vehicle circulation and we use a standard size SUV, we understand that some cars are larger than that. We understand that some cars are smaller than that, we use a standard size SUV as an sort of average size for the car. And we assume about four feet average of space in between from bumper to bumper, which is sort of what we've, you know. Observed over the years, so having said all that, we think that um, under this current scenario, we should be able to fit. About thirty-three cars onto the site for afternoon pickup, of those thirty-three, it's important to note. Uh, just, just the first seven cars, first seven cars queue up. In the drop off, what we're calling the, I'm sorry, the pickup zone, or drop off and pickup, but this, in this particular instance, the afternoon pickup zone. Where the curb, hopefully you can see this, let me see if I can uh. Just maybe highlight this a little bit through here if I can, that gonna work, of course not. Um. Hopefully you can see that these first seven cars, these first seven cars sit at a flush curb condition um, with protective bollards. So the entirety of this condition through here is all um, all accessible. Um, and those, uh, the first, these first seven cars will pick up, the students will come out and pick up. And the cars will continue to queue through seven at a time, pick up, pick up, and then exit, you can see they have their own. Um, they have their own dedicated exit drive. Onto Old Marlboro Road, completely separate exit drive from the bus exit over here. Uh, so that's how we have, that's how we have concluded how to best handle car queue, we, we're trying to, as, as you know, part of this. The question behind this is, how many cars can we potentially get off the road, as you know, right now, um, cars line up on the shoulder. Excuse me, the south shoulder of Old Marlboro Road, and then queue onto the site to pick up, so what we're trying to do with this, of course, is to pull as many cars. Onto the site as we can. The um.
I have a question, you said seven at a time, so you fill up one through seven, they move on, and then eight through. Fifteen come up?
Eight through fourteen, yeah, that's correct. A right, right, exactly.
Let's say um, car number four is my car. And um, knowing my son, who's now much older than middle school, but when he was in middle school. He just um, he like never showed up, you know, it's like I'm sitting there waiting for him, waiting for him, he's like uh, you know. He, where, where is his mine, so there I am in car number four. Can none of those seven cars move on because my son is dilly-dallying, I, I don't quite understand how this works.
Yeah, so that's an operational, um, that's an operational item, I'm not sure that I'm. Qualified to answer how the operations would work, um, a few, some, I, I, I can't, I don't. Again, I don't want to speak for anyone at all, but I, I can tell you that there are. Systems in other communities that, that use apps, or they have, you know, the, 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 the students know which. Uh, cars are out there, so they're released like that, there's a bunch of different ways to do it, but again, I don't think I'm. The right person to speak for how the uh, faculty or administration is going to. Handle the operations of the queue.
If it's an operational issue, that, that, that is to say, maybe this is operational as well, if. Seven cars pull up and then all seven load and then all seven cars pull away together. It sounds like there would have to be a school staff member to make sure the car eight doesn't start moving up too soon and that cars one through seven need to know. Know that they need to all go at once or, or wait until the end, and at that point. If I were the school and car number four's kid hadn't showed up, I would make car number four exit and go around to the end of the queue again. And hopefully car number four would teach their kid not to do that again. But that still sounds operational.
A, a few of us have observed how the existing condition works right now at, at drop off. Uh, excuse, I keep saying, I, at pickup, um, so. It works now even with the cars out on Old Marlboro. Um, I would imagine that they would want to probably try to tweak some stuff because we've given them more onsite queue now than what they currently have. But I, I, again, I, I don't want to answer for the uh, faculty or administration for this, but, but you're right, I, I think, you know, it, it's operational now. It's operational now, but with more cars out on Old Marlboro instead of onsite.
Oh, so how many now, here you've got thirty-three in the queue, what does that compare to existing condition? How many can they fit before they're spilling out onto Old Marlboro?
I, I don't have that number in front of me, uh, it's significantly less though, because there's no queue onsite right now, except for the cars that. You know, the first cars that get there. But I, I don't want to say a number uh, and, and have it be wrong, but I can tell you that the cars do all line up on Old Marlboro at this time.
Okay, and then, and then second question, in this queue, say I'm a, a teacher and I'm ready to leave school. And I'm parked in what, you know, that second parking area where ten through thirty-one. You know, everybody's winding around, do I, do I just? Like, sit in my car and, you know, can, how do I, how do I get out of a parking space?
Yeah, again, I think, you know, the, these are things that we vetted with the faculty and the administration, I think. Boy, I hate to say this again, because I'm trying to, I'm trying to do this from recollection, but my recollection was that. The majority of the queue um, is already going to be gone, right? By the time teachers are uh, heading to their cars to, to leave for the day, that was my understanding.
Okay.
If I'm wrong, if I'm wrong, I, I, I very much apologize, but that was my recollection of the conversations that we had.
And of the seven hundred students, what percent are going to be in the bus line versus what percent are in the queue? That we're talking about, do you know the numbers?
I can tell you that there are eighteen buses. I can tell you that, I don't, unfortunately, I don't have the traffic report in front of me, I could, we can get, we can absolutely get you those answers. I don't have them in front of me right now, but I, I, like I said, I can tell you that there are eighteen, there are eighteen buses every day.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
Uh, I have a question, since we were just mentioning the buses, in the, in the previous uh. Uh. Showing of this, the buses were lining up. Um, you know, in the two queues that are to the right there, and I think there were also some that were further down. Sort of on the road, uh, what this. I, I guess my question is, are now all of the buses in those, those two queue lines on the right, or will there be buses elsewhere still as well?
So, yeah, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, again, this is only at. Pickup in the afternoon where the buses are static and they're there and they're waiting for the students.
Yeah.
Um, there are ten buses, five in each of these lanes uh, at the main entrance. The remaining eight buses still align along these, this uh. Southernmost entry drive along this sidewalk through here and along this element of the sidewalk through here, that's where the other eight buses uh, will wait.
And so, yeah, so those eight buses, will they load there, or will they wait to move over to the other area to load?
Yeah, my understanding uh, is that they will load there as well. And then when it's time for the buses to leave, all vehicles, just like today, right, just like it works today, all, all the other vehicles onsite stop. When the buses are uh, leaving and the buses, the, as, as you all probably know, right, there's, I believe, eight, eighteen buses right now on the site, right? And they, they park diagonally in front of the building, and then they leave in order one at a time, they pull a hard, you know, pull a hard left, because you're not allowed to back up a bus, of course. Um, and then they leave sort of in order, and I think we're anticipating the same thing here where, you know, the, the first five buses are released, and the next five buses are released. And then the, the buses along this part of the road here, say the, this four, three or four will release, and then this last four or five. Will all release, they all leave through their own debt, through the dedicated bus exit through here, they all follow the same route every time, they never. Cross over and leave through the uh, car exit, the passenger vehicle exit, that's how they all exit, and then passenger vehicle. Um. Movement can, can restart after the buses leave. It's very similar to what is at the school right now.
So every bus assigned a parking space um, or is it just random however they arrive?
I, I, you're gonna, I, I, I know I sound like a broken record, but again, I think that's going to be an operational issue that um, that the school decides. My instinct is that they'll, they'll assign a space for them, but I don't know that for sure, because it depends on when they. It depends on when the buses arrive, right?
Right.
So Nathan, I'm gonna um, jump in while it's.
Yeah.
Um, it's kind of great for everybody to understand um. A little bit of how the mechanics of the parking works, because um, they are requesting relief from parking. From the required hundred and ninety-two spaces um, down to a hundred and fifty spaces. Um, with some of those spaces allocated for handicap, um, the. Um, the municipal use does not require site plan review, so um, the board is, is really only focusing on. The requested relief from parking, um, so I think if, um, if Michael can kind of get into. The mechanics of um, what the van spaces are for, where the visitor spaces are, how the full-time, part-time. What is that teacher ratio, uh, and provide additional information for this justification from a hundred and ninety-two down to a hundred and fifty. Um, with. Six of those spaces for vans, six for handicap, and then I think there's a certain amount for visitors. Um, so that's, that's the information that I think the board needs to be able to move forward. With understanding the recommended, I mean, the requested relief from parking.
Great, okay, so the, so again, I, hopefully everybody can see this. I wish I had a better way to highlight things here, um. But I don't, so I'll make the best of it, uh. Hopefully you can see my uh, cursor right through, right, uh, the initial, our uh, initial layout has. Visitor spaces along this walkway, this part of the, you can see this parking area has a walkway. That creates an accessible route to the main entrance, so we're identifying these spaces as visitor spaces. The six special advanced would be parked along here with the larger, slight, slightly larger spaces. And then we have the five accessible parking spaces closest to the door, all within uh, two hundred feet of the main. Accessible building entrance per five twenty-one CMR. Um, on this side of this main parking area, sit the um. The EV before, initial four EV uh, charging stations, you can kind of see them right through here, the ones that have the curb stops here. Um, as a means to keep cars from accidentally bumping into the uh, into the, into the EV uh, charging towers. Uh, the rest of the parking is interspersed faculty and staff, both this, what we're calling the north parking lot and the south parking lot. Um. I don't have the ratio, I, I apologize, I don't, I don't have the ratio of full-time to part-time staff members. Um, all I have is the total and the understanding that the total won't always be there, so um. When we figured out that we had a hundred forty uh, space, a hundred fifty spaces, and then, when, once you take out the visitor spaces, the van spaces. The accessible spaces and the EV spaces, I think that gets us down to about a hundred twenty-nine or a hundred thirty, so I, I forget exactly what the number is. But my understanding was um. Uh, was that that was going to be a sufficient quantity of parking without um, without adding any impervious area, and of course, you know, I, I. I mentioned that in my narrative, but I'll, I think it been, met, bears mentioning again that, obviously, we're, we're, we're sort of pushing in two different directions, right? The more parking we add to the space uh, to the site, um, the more we're increasing impervious area, so we've been trying really hard to find that, that. That balance and strike that balance between making sure that there's enough um, uh, parking spaces here, but also trying to. Stay as close as we can to the fifteen percent impervious uh, number.
And, and do you have any parking for compact cars only versus the, I guess, the S, large SUV size that you've been using? For the, the other models or?
We do not, I don't, Elizabeth, correct me if I'm wrong, is that a requirement?
Um, it is not a requirement, it is a way to um, at least get some additional parking. Um, so, um, it is something that um, you know, that you can look at assigning, you know. A block of spaces is compacted and, and see if that increases the number, but um, I think you're gonna have to go back to. The school and um. And, and provide the justification for the requested relief, and that somebody is gonna have to. Provide the information on full-time and faculty and figure out. You know, what is the maximum number of staff that's gonna be at the, the site, I mean, it's. Uh, unless the, you know, unless the board feels that they have sufficient information to move forward with a recommendation, I find it uh, challenging. To say that. Um, what, what the justification is for the relief. um, what, what the justification is for the relief.
I have a question. I noticed that in the two parking lots where the, um, blue afternoon pickup arrow travels for parents, um, or other people picking up children, the parking lots are one-way, but the other, and the buses as well, but the other three sections of parking lot have two-way aisles. And I wonder why that is, if the idea is that it's necessary to allow traffic to circulate quickly enough? Because if everything was one-way, so that you could only go into the site and you had to leave by the main driveway in front of the school, or, well, it would probably have to be that way. Um, then the travel aisles could be narrower, which could either allow the property to get under the fifteen percent um, impervious surface, or contrariwise, um, modify the layout of the parking lot somewhat in order to get more spaces in and not ask for as much relief.
Sure, so, uh, so the areas that you're discussing through here, this two-way, this two-way, this two-way, uh, are designed that way to allow cars, if there's, if the lots are full, if there's an event or something like that. Um, we, we looked at this, um, pretty critically and, and tried to think about what elements of, of this parking area would need to be two-way in order to allow as best as possible, a vehicle that enters the site and is looking for a parking space. We, we, we're trying to avoid having them have to go back out onto Old Marlboro Road and re-enter the site if there's no, if there's no parking spaces.
Right, although they could go out the long narrow, um, parking lot with the blue exit arrow and then turn left in order to get back in to serve.
Yeah, they can't, that's exactly why this part has to be two-way, correct?
But then why do you have to let people out that way? Why couldn't they just come in?
Why couldn't they just in? I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not quite following, I'm, I'm, I'm not quite following. You mean, you mean this left?
Yeah, so if you come in, um, oh, because that is exit only, you can't come in up there, okay? Now I see, it's so close to the top of the screen.
I'm sorry, yeah, let me, let me see if I can pan up a little bit, does that help?
Okay, yes, now I see, it's because you can only go out that way, so yes, you do have to, okay.
Right, so this is entrance only, where I'm, hopefully you can see me pointing to right now, that's egress only.
Got it, okay, now I see.
If we made the whole thing a one-way circulation, then if you're parked, say, here, uh, and you wanna leave, you can't simply pull out like this and go out like this. You would need to come out of your spot, you'd need to come around, you'd need to get back onto the main access drive here and then leave like that. So, we left.
And that would certainly be an inconvenience for the person, that would be quite inconvenient for the person parked in that space. But on the other hand, you're trying to squeeze a lot onto, um, a site with a lot of restrictions, so.
Yeah, well, it's, it's less, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
I was only going to say, it's worth considering, even though the answer may be no, and I guess you have considered it.
Well, yeah, only simply because it's, it's, it's less of, uh, issue of convenience and more of an issue of trying to, um, safely and smartly get cars off the, out, out of the property and onto Old Marlboro. If we took, if we made every car, say there was, you know, whatever kind of an event or something, and if every car needed to queue through here, queue around and leave all in the same manner, um, you know, it would, it would slow traffic down considerably.
What about just the middle one, maybe?
So, uh, I wanna, before we go further into that, I, I mean, I wanna get back to sort of why this conversation is, is happening, uh, and trying to better understand the, you know, the justification for the relief from, from parking. Um, yeah, particularly in the face of, there are other things that I guess could be done to, uh, you know, compact spaces were mentioned, maybe a slight realignment of the lots, uh, to allow for at least something closer to, um, you know, the required amount. Uh, but mainly if we just get back to the justification for the current, uh, the current setup and, uh, the request for relief.
Yeah, sure, I'm, I'm not sure if there's, um, i- is there anything, if, if there's anything else? I mean, I guess in, you know, in, in, in summary, the, you know, we, at least, I think the design team considers it a, a benefit to the project that the school doesn't feel like it needs all one hundred ninety-two parking spaces. Because obviously, again, that's a, that's a really big, that would be a really big impact on, um, on the impervious area calculation. I beli- I believe it would add about eleven thousand two hundred extra, uh, square feet of, of impervious, uh, pavement to the property. So I think we've all have been sort of framing it and, and approaching it as a, as a benefit to the project. You know, the less cars on the site, obviously, the less, you know.
Uh, I, I think, I think we would all be in agreement that that is, that is a benefit. Uh, we're just trying to understand, how did you come to, uh, you know, the figure that you came to? What is, what is the understanding that only, uh, I, I don't have it in front of me, the, I think it's a hundred and four, is it a hundred and forty?
A hundred and forty, we were told, yeah.
So how, how did you get to the hundred and forty number in saying that you do not need the additional fifty-two spaces?
Yeah, so, so I'm gonna have to, um, I'm gonna have to, um, review that with, um, with the administration and, and we got the one hundred forty number from the administration. I don't have a breakdown of, of what is full-time and what is part-time. I don't have that, uh, in front of me, so I can, I can get that for, for the board.
That would be great, yeah, I think we, we need to better understand that before we talk anything else about, you know, trying to squeeze in more lot, or even more spaces or not. Um, because I, I agree with you, if we can get, you know, get by with this little, uh, uh, parking spaces and impervious, uh, uh, you know, ground, that would be great.
Okay, yeah, we will get that for you.
So, Michael, I think it will be important for them, it's, it's not just the count, but, um, if you had all the full-time staff and all the part-time staff, it may be part-time, but if everybody is on the site from ten to, you know, one, you, you don't have enough parking. So, you know, they, the, the administration needs to provide a little bit more information on how that, um, the hours of, you know, those staff people and, um, w- why is only a hundred and thirty spaces gonna be sufficient?
So I, I, I think I can provide a small little bit of insight without, you know, overstepping my bounds. I, I do know from conversations that the part-time staff aren't necessarily part-time staff Monday through Friday. Some of the part-time staff are, say, there on Monday and Thursday. Some of them are there Wednesday only, some of them might be there Friday and Tuesday or something like that. So it's, it's not that, um, the entirety of the full-time and part-time faculty are there for a portion of the day, five days a week. It's more that the, the part-time staff are there on, are, are there on different particular days based on what is happening, um, and their, their need at the school on that particular day. So I think that's why the number is lower, but again, I don't have those exact numbers, but I will get them.
I think that's the sort of thing we would be looking for.
Understood, yep.
Um, and then, um, my only other, um, comment under the relief from parking had to deal with, um, having an understanding of, um, how this reduction in parking, because, um, it's, it's not just the, the faculty and staff, it's also the parking, um, deals with various events that happen at school. So, um, how, how do, how will they handle those, you know, larger events? Um, you know, is it, you know, parent-teacher conference night? Um, you know, is it only, you know, not all the staff is there, it's only fifty teachers? So that frees up a significant amount of parking for parent-teacher night or something. So, um, I think they need to provide you a little, a little bit more information on that aspect as well.
Okay. I think, you know, one of the things, uh, again, at a very high level, I, I don't wanna pin anything down, but one of the things at a very high level we, we discussed is that, you know, the, also, there would also be, uh, you know, area where they're, where the queuing, where the typical queuing would be, those could be used as parking, um, at least along the roadways, um, during parent-teacher conference, along where the bus is parked along the road here, where the sidewalks are. Those areas could potentially be used as, as, as parking during parent-teacher conferences as well, so. Uh, but I will get a more.
Um, I, I, I think you would have issues with the fire department.
Oh, that's fair.
Having.
So I guess I'll get a more complete answer from them, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, um, Nathan, the last item I had, um, was just from the comment letter that I received from the fire department, um, this morning, um, dealing with, um, getting at least a little bit more information on the, the whole, um, solar aspect of this proj- project, which is not before the board, um, as part of this project, but, um, may have an impact on, um, the impervious coverage. Uh, dealing with the fire department will require any battery storage system to be located outside of the actual building in its own, you know, structure that has fire protection. So, um, is that something that has been calculated into the impervious coverage?
So the battery storage is being, uh, we're currently proposing battery storage in this sort of, um, this sort of utility farm down here over by the, uh, over by the, the, the loading area at the back house. Uh, we don't have it final settled locations, as, as you can see, there's a lot of like, there's a lot of squares and rectangles back here. Um, generators, transformers, battery backup stores, a lot of, uh, uh, other stuff for the, uh, for the photovoltaics. Um, the, the final layout of this area is still in flux. Uh, so we don't have a, we don't have it completely figured out yet, but most of the items, if not all the items, will be out here. Um, in terms of the impervious for the PV, we don't have an approved photovoltaic plan yet. Uh, so we have not accounted for that yet, when we have an approved, uh, you know, a, 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 a plan of the photovoltaics, it's approved by either this body or whoever needs to approve it, then we'll, um, we'll overlay that onto our project, we'll make any necessary uh, minor adjustments to parking layout or anything to make sure that everything, uh, fits and works fine. And then we'll have to, um, re-address our impervious area calculations to see if it's impacted by the, uh, by the, by the PV.
So it's my, and, and, so it's my understanding now that, um, the, the battery storage will be accommodated in this exterior equipment enclosure that's to the right, but, well, to the left of the building closest to Old Marlboro, correct?
That's correct.
Is that area, um, currently calculated as all in the impervious coverage?
No, just the, um, just the pads, just the pads, the, the, um, the ground plane treatment through here will be, uh, like a three-quarter minus crushed stone with a filter fabric, um, underneath it. We're not gonna put, we're not gonna make that whole thing, say, concrete or batuminous, because then it, it, it's unnecessary, um, it's unnecessary impervious area, but it also wouldn't make sense to try to lom and seed that area because it'd be impossible to maintain. So we're, we're anticipating, like I said, like three-quarter minus crushed stone, uh, on the ground through there.
If I may, though, I think Elizabeth, to answer your question, that the battery itself would sit on one of those pads.
That's correct.
So that's included in the, are, are impervious calculations.
That's correct.
Um, but then to Michael's comment about the proposed, um, I know that there's discussion about having, um, canopy solar over the parking spaces. Um, and you're, you're saying that canopy solar will increase the impervious coverage as well?
I'm not saying that, I'm saying I don't know what will happen, when it's, after it's approved. I'm saying that we'll have to reevaluate it after we get the approved plans.
Um, okay, so, um, uh, just for, for the board's understanding, um, that is not part of, um, this special permit. Um, and, uh, if the canopy solar increases the impervious coverage, um, the school will have to come back to the planning board and the zoning board of appeals for an amendment to the special permit. Um, go back to the natural resources commission and go back to the public works commission. Um, basically go through the whole process again for an amendment to the special permit to increase the impervious coverage. So I just want everybody to be aware of that at this point in time. So that was the end, the, um, the last, um, the last item in, in my report.
Elizabeth, shall I stop sharing my screen now?
Sure.
Okay.
So, I mean, it sounds like, based on what's still outstanding then for, for the parking relief, there's, we are not going to be making a decision tonight.
I, I think it would be very challenging for the board to make a formal decision tonight. Um, I would recommend that the discussion be continued, um, the applicant provide the additional information. Um, maybe they can, um, maybe there is some information that they can look to as far as the impervious coverage. Um, I, I don't know the design of the canopy solar, whether it is just entirely over the existing pavement, which that, then there would be no increase, but, um, but as far as the relief from parking, yes, additional information is, um, I believe is needed for the board to move forward. So my recommendation is to continue this.
Elizabeth, there was, yes, there was one thing you said about, um, gathering information for parking requirements that I didn't quite catch. You said you thought that the fire department probably would not look kindly on using, um, the bus loading areas as, um, uh, overflow parking for evening events where there weren't, um, uh, buses parked on side. And what I, my question is, and you may not have an answer for this, this may be for the fire department, um, whether you meant the entrance driveway where the eight extra buses would go, or whether you meant both of the two parallel aisles closer to the exit, or whether you just meant one of those, because if even one of those was available for evening event parking, it would have some, um, uh, bearing on what decision we make. I guess it's a question for you, the fire department and/or the applicant, just to make sure that we, the board, get clarity on that. What can or cannot be used?
Yep, so my statement was, um, Michael's comment that where the parent queuing happens
Hmm.
along the front of the school.
Hmm.
Um, maybe that could be used for parking during, you know, large events. Um, that's my, my comment that dealt with, the fire department would not allow, um, parking along the parent queuing in front of the school.
Yeah.
Right.
The, whether, whether, um, uh, that's something that, um, Michael can go back to the administration on parent-teacher, you know, or large events, if there are no buses, um, that could be, um, part of the parking management strategy and add, um, justification for the relief for parking. That parallel parking could happen in those two bus aisles. Um, that's something that he can ask the administration about and include in the additional information, and I'll have the fire department review that. Um, I don't think the fire department would, um, be amenable to having parking in the lower bus parking driveway, given, um, that it's, um, that's where they would likely do additional staging if there were an event. Um, and, uh, you know, an incident at the school, so, but the other two, um, bus parking areas, um, that, that could be a possibility, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, before I move to public comment, is there, are there any other comments from the board about any of things covered so far? No? Okay, uh, so I'll move on to public comment. Pamela, you've been, uh, waiting patiently with your hand up there, I appreciate that. Um, please go ahead, you've already unmuted yourself, uh, you know, introduce yourself, your address, you know, you know, uh,
fourteen, thirteen Concord Green, unit four. Um, I noticed that there were four electric vehicle charging stations in the middle school lot. Are we considering the fact that the majority of cars will be? Are we considering the fact that the majority of cars will be electric within? Easily the, the early half of the school's lifespan?
Uh, we are actually, the, the, uh, project includes, uh, laying conduit for additional, um. For, for, I, I, I'll find out, I can find out the exact number. I, I forget what it is. It's a percentage of the amount of parking. But we are, we're installing conduit for, uh, for future expansion of the, of the EV parking.
Great, thank you.
Michael, would you be able to include that in, uh, uh, what you send? Just if you have a. A, um, layout of where that conduit will be, just so we can have a sense of. How many and which parking spaces that would touch?
Sure, Ken.
Thank you. All right, I don't, I'm, I'm not seeing anybody else. Let me, uh, just quickly scroll here, make sure I'm missing anybody, nope.
We are missing somebody. We're missing Mark.
Oh. Yeah, yeah, you're right. Um, that's, that, that's a potential problem.
Mark, he just sent me an email. He's, um, he keeps losing his connection. So if you wanna, which this is only, um, a recommendation, there's still four of you, so you can continue.
Okay, good. Okay, so, uh, we, uh, at this point, it looks like this will be continued. Can we, uh, do we have? Space and time on, uh. Our next meeting would be. The eighth, assuming the applicant can. Get everything in by the eighth. Would be able to do that. I would also remind everybody that the eighth is also an election day.
Which we, um, did, um, check with the town clerk, um, because the board is only having a public meeting. It's not a public hearing. Um, and your meeting starts at seven, the polls close at eight, um, the board can meet on the eighth.
Okay. Okay. Uh, so yeah, so we can continue this to. To the eighth then.
Um, I, I think it depends on how fast Steve and Michael, they think they can reply to comments. Um, and have engineering and the fire department and, um, myself review all the information. Um, I. I, I don't think there's any, you know, significant outstanding issues. Um, so, you know, I can move forward and, uh, and start pulling together at least all the recommended conditions. Um, and have something for the board to look at.
If I can just say that I, uh, I've reached out to Justin in engineering who provided the comments, um, last week. And so we'll look to resolve, obviously, if we can resolve all of them, we will, um, before the eighth. But if there are some sort of outstanding comments, just because of timing and whatever, we would look for those to be, um, conditioned. Seeing that they're not showstoppers, as you, as you had said earlier, Elizabeth. So that's, that's our goal, um, for the engineering comments, um, in particular. Um, and also for the, for the parking, obviously we'll coordinate with the administration as quickly as possible and get a response back. Um, back out to, um, certainly before the eighth. So. We would like to continue to the eighth, um, in, in anticipation of providing you comments, um, so that they can be reviewed and incorporated into. Um, recommendations to the ZBA as, as part and also conditions. Um, so that's our request.
Yeah. Uh, Elizabeth, really quick, working backwards from the eighth, when. In, in terms of the, uh, parking information that I need to, uh, gather from the administration. When would you need something from me so that it gives you and everybody else sufficient time to review before the meeting?
Um, I, I, I would say, um. By the morning of the first, a week.
A week, okay.
Great, okay, so. We will continue this to November eighth at. Do we have spaces?
Seven, Heather, I believe.
Uh, seven ten, I think we have two items already on there.
Oh, the eighth has the, um, one sixty-six Main Street and two eighty-six Barrett's Mill Road.
Okay.
Um, and then Concord Academy. Is somewhere in there.
Okay, so not seven.
No, we'll say seven thirty.
Okay. Very optimistic, seven thirty. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Seven thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now on to administrative business, um. We are doing the Concord Historical Commission.
Yes, um, the chair, Melissa Salfield is here to just. Quickly give a board an update and ask, answer any questions.
Well, I, I have a, I have a request. So, um, I'm Melissa Salfield, seven Concord Green, number seven. I am chair of the historical commission and I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. I'm here to, um, tell you about a joint grant proposal from the historical commission and Congress Planning Department. It's a proposal that I am asking you folks to support by sending a letter of recommendation to the community preservation committee. We are seeking a grant of fifty thousand dollars to create an historic preservation plan for the town. These funds would be used to hire a team of historic preservation consultants. Um, the plan will support. Uh, an integrated cross disciplinary goals that were set forth on the town's most recent, recent long range plan envisioned Concord twenty thirty. It's been well over twenty years since Concord operated from a comprehensive preservation plan. That plan, so this is one document, historic resources master plan, which this is and associated documents. Um, is dated. It does not address challenges of the twenty-first century. For example, the town history is incomplete. It ignores the role of African Americans. It minimally describes the lives and contributions. Of Native Americans and it only cursory, uh, describes the role of immigrants in our town. And as we advance deeper into the twenty-first century. Concord is facing challenges much different than twenty years ago, sort of versus sustainability, like climate change and weather impacts. The need for more affordable housing and economic well-being to ma- maintain that in view of globalization. Uh, major market shifts in the economy. So these were concerns again that were not concerned, considered, uh, two decades ago. Still, the master plan, again, our little, little bible here. And its associated, uh, documents have served as extremely valuable tools for the town. They've guided decision-making by town departments, community organizations and individual property owners. And are an integral part of the town CPC's own requirements when the, for those who are seeking grants. Under the category of historic preservation. So to create the new plan, our consultants will follow standards that were established by the Massachusetts Historical Commission. Which includes a grant, matching grant program to encourage preservation planning across the Commonwealth. By adhering to MHC's requirements, we hope to qualify for a matching grant of twenty-five thousand dollars. In which case, we would reimburse the town twenty-five thousand. Our bid documents will adopt the MHC scope of work, customized for Concord, of course, and define a fixed price. That would allow the historical commission to select the best qualified bidder. To create the plan, we will emphasize community outreach, seek direct input from local boards and commissions, town staff. Local organizations, businesses and town residents. To supplement the work, we will convene public forums to present recommendations and gather feedback. The project represents the first phase in developing what we would like to call, um. An, an online historic preservation plan and reference guide. This online resource will include links to additional documentary texts available through the Library of Congress. Town archives, state macros records. In addition to all the data and material that is gathered as a result of the consultant's work. We intend that this online portal will be the go-to resource for professional historians. Town planners and individual homeowners. So again, what I'm asking, um, is a letter from you folks. To support this, um, initiative on our part, um, and the letter needs to be in by November eighteenth. Any questions?
I don't mute. I, I don't have any questions. I think this sounds like, uh, it sounds fantastic and, uh, uh, I'm glad to hear that we're sort of. Updating everything and, uh, and, you know, recognizing, uh, more, more diverse history than, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Currently recognized in, in that. So that sounds great to me. I don't know if anyone else on the board wants to, uh, comment or have any questions?
So my only question is, um, what would be your question really? Who's gonna write the letter? I would, I'd just like to point out that Marcia Rasmussen, the head of the planning division for the town. Is what the person who said to me, Melissa, this is really what we need. I had had a, a kind of a smaller initiative. That I thought we wanted to do, but, um, in conversation with her, I completely changed my mind. This clearly is something the town needs. I'm not sure it ever really had a preservation plan. Did it, Elizabeth? I mean.
Um, n- n- no, and, um, just as a, um. A, a point of reference, um, I'm, I'm the lowly head of the planning division. Marcia's. The head of the whole building, so she oversees all five, all five divisions. So.
Okay.
Um, she's got a much tougher job than, uh, anybody can even imagine.
Um, well, I do know she has a very tough job. Anyway.
Yeah, so, um, so I, I, I think, um, what's been provided, um. Uh, and just the board, uh, acknowledging that, um. This project, um, you know, has the opportunity for, um. You know, just. Significant improvements to, you know, just this element of, in the history of town and as Nathan said. Um, just a more diverse, um, history and the telling of that history is, um, is important. And, um, we have the board supports, wants to, um. Move to recommend, uh, uh, letter of support. Um, I can, um, draft that and just have Nathan review it and, uh, sign on behalf of the board.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Okay, where does the money come from? Should we be concerned about that?
No, the money, the money is the CPC money. So I don't know what their budget is, they share the two million dollars or something. So we, we, you know, a number of people, uh, throughout the town, private individuals, well as different town departments will apply for money from the CPC.
Right.
So that's just what we're doing.
Okay.
But we would also be applying, because we are working with, uh, the Mass Historical. We hope to get a grant from them, which would, um, you know, reduce some of the cost to the town.
Yeah, great. Fall forward.
Great, so Elizabeth, sounds like you'll draft that. I'll take a look at it and, uh, and sign it. Uh, I think it's, like I said, I think it's fantastic. So thank you for taking the time to. Come and share that with us. Uh, we look forward to, uh, hopefully that moving forward, so.
Thank you. Somebody would like to move. Uh, the, the planning board. Um, is in support of the historical commission CPA application and recommend, um. Men's, uh, and to send a letter of support to the community preservation committee. Um, that would be great.
I make a motion to do exactly that.
Okay.
Do I, do we have a second? I see Andrew, but I heard Linda, so we'll go with Linda. Great, uh, let's take a vote. Uh, Mark.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Sue.
Hi.
Andrew.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Uh, the next up is, uh, potential zoning bylaw amendments, and I believe we're going to talk about.
Yes.
Food.
And, um, so just to, uh, give everybody just a quick update on the mobile food establishments. Uh, Linda and I met on. Was that just yesterday?
Well, yesterday was Monday, so maybe.
Oh, my gosh, it was just yesterday. Um, and, um, I'm. Yeah, meeting with the health director and she sent me some additional information, um. I, I think we have a real positive, um, direction. And so at your next meeting, you'll see, um, updated draft warrant article for that. And I still need to speak to one of the lieutenants in the police department, uh, to get their feedback. On the hawkers and peddlers license process, but so that's just to give you an update on that one. Um, Sue did, um. Send me some comments, so I'm gonna just go ahead and share my screen with, on the fast food. And work from, um. Sue's draft. So from, at the last meeting, um, the board asked that I, um, try and think of a way to. Simplify the warrant article and, um, I, I, I think this does this. Um, and, uh, this item three right here. Previously, we had fast food, um. We had a restaurant, you know, and I tried to break it out into two different ones, but then. Um, as the board's conversation at the last meeting and talking about parking and, um, just added. Uh, this straight in here into the current definition as a new item number three. Um, and this language right here. Um, specifically comes from, uh, the current. Section in the zoning bylaw under prohibited uses, uh, so it's, it's taking something that is already. In the bylaw. Um, and just, you know, moving it up here. Sue added, um, I don't know if you wanna go through your comment.
Sure, I only noted that since we were deleting the definition of fast food restaurants where we forbade them. Then we had better define them someplace else. And we could define them in section one point three. But it occurred to me that the simplest thing was just to add the words, fast food comma defined as, right into the bylaw. Where the definition verbiage was added by Elizabeth.
Which that is consistent with what's already in the, um, bylaw under prohibited uses.
Yeah, right, exactly. And I realize now I failed to say why I highlighted. Town's polystyrene prohibition and food service where's bylaw, that was to, a reminder to myself to say. To question whether we thought it was a good idea to put that specific language into this article because. Suppose the town were to rescind the polystyrene prohibition. Or add a new prohibition similar to, but different from the polystyrene one, we would then have to update. Section four point five point four, and I wondered if it would be better to say meets other applicable. Uh, meets any applicable town bylaws. With respect to food packaging or some other language that anyone thought might be suitable.
I like the idea of, of making a more general reference, but does that cause any? Is there any issue with that? I guess is my question for Elizabeth.
No, no, it's, it, that's, that's consistent with other items in the, you know, in the zoning bylaw. Not referencing, you know, something so specific where.
Yeah.
That's something else could change. And then you're looking at having to go back to town meeting when another document gets updated, so. Um, in, uh, and I'll look for the exact language, um, in the bylaw where it's used. It's, um, it's, you know, all, you know. Um, town bylaws, rules and regs are, there, there's language in there already and I will, I'll add that to, to this section.
And we just make sure that during town meeting, during the presentation and before, when we make presentations on this, that. That language is inclusive of the existing polystyrene prohibition. Just so people don't think there, it's somehow not, not, uh, also beholden to that.
My only other comments were with respect to the explanation and, uh, it was.
Uh, well, um. So I just.
Oh, you're right. I also put in the definition under minimum parking, right? That is to say, I added fast food. That is to say I added fast food.
Just want to put that in there to remind myself. Um, so the next item had to deal with having a conversation regarding, um, the parking. And, um. I provided last, last time when the board discussed this, you know, looked at other communities and what they, um, require and. It, it really is kind of, you know, all over the map and there wasn't, you know, there wasn't one town that. That fit into, um. The idea of parking and, and what I see is trying to accomplish. When you have, let's say, just a, you know, a purely, you know, fast food, fast food restaurant. You can have, um, you can have a McDonald's that has. You know, thirty some seats and you would have, you know, one space. Per each three seats and one space per employee on the largest shift and. The, the, the takeout portion likely with a, a, a restaurant with that many seats. The people that are just parking, going in and picking up their food, the, the turnover is sufficient. I think there would be enough seat, enough parking spaces. To, you know, allow for both of those things to, to exist without there being parking issues. Um, it's the, the smaller, the smaller restaurant that, or let's say, let's take the bubble tea. Uh, example where, uh, they didn't want to have any seats. So. Uh, if that is the, the example, then what is the metric for parking? You have, um, you know, one space per employee on the largest shift. But then is it, you know, one space per, um, you know, a, a square footage of. Area devoted to, um, you know, customer. Customer service or, you know, um, you know, customer. Customer area or, um. The, you know, customer. Public space or I, I'm just, I'm having a hard time trying to think of what that metric would be.
And you're saying that the other towns were not particularly helpful in terms of getting guidance for that.
Yeah, the, um, I'll, I'll give you an example. So, um. Like, uh. New Bedford, um, one space per employee per shift. For a minimum of five spaces plus one space per a hundred square feet of gross floor area with a minimum of twenty spaces. And I kind of think it's like, oh, okay, well, that's, that's excessive, but.
Yeah.
Bubble, bubble tea was only seven hundred and fifty square feet for the whole entire place. Um. Then, uh. Uh, Acton has one space per hundred square feet of net floor area for a fast food restaurant. With seating, but no table service. His net floor area is defined as the total of all floor area of the building, including basement and other storage areas. But not including stairways, elevator wells, restrooms, common hallways and building service areas. Um, and I couldn't find where building service areas were defined. And like Fall River for dine in, carry out one space per each employee per shift. Minimum of ten spaces for customers. Well, you know, again, taking the bubble tea as an example that, you know.
Uh, well, the Sudbury one.
Um, oh, okay. One space per hundred and eighty square feet of gross floor area. Or in the village district, it's three hundred square feet. And that's a restaurant with no seating.
Yeah. Uh, well, two questions, one question about that one.
Bedford, I mean Bedford, one space for each four seats of rated capacity or one space for each four persons. Normally expected on the premises at the time of maximum use. So. I, I don't, I don't even know how you even, you know, regulate that, but, um, there. That does lead me to, um, believe you, every restaurant. Has, um, under building code and fire code, there is a, you know, a maximum rated capacity of people. And so, um, you know, you could. I could talk to them about, let's say, like the bubble tea example. And say, okay, so, you know, what would be? If there was no seating, here's the square footage, here's the floor plan they have, you know, what would be the maximum, you know? Person capacity and, and see if that equates to some type of metric of, you know, like one space per. Um, you know, two people, you know, rated capacity or, or you see if that comes up as a metric.
I, I, I guess my question is, what's wrong with the Sudbury one? I kind of like that one.
Wait, which one was that?
The, the, the one.
Once, one space for a hundred and eighty square feet of gross floor area?
With, I actually like that they have it, uh, you know, they have sort of a in-town, out-of-town, uh, definition.
Well, they have with seating and.
No, no, I mean, within just the, the first one that's with no seating. They have a hundred and eighty, uh, once, one space per a hundred and eighty square feet. Um, and then they have one space for three hundred square feet within basically a town center. Um. I kind of like that idea because again, to, you know, stick with the bubble tea thing that was going to be over in. Like near the road depot, right? Is that where that was going to be?
Uh, yeah, up, yeah, in the like Crosby's parking lot.
Yeah. So.
So if we went with one space per three hundred square feet and it was seven fifty, that would give it. Round up to three spaces for the whole schmear.
Well, no, it would be three spaces and, and one space per employee on the largest shift.
Yeah.
Ah. But on the other. Doing that for all restaurants, whether they have seating or not.
Um, well, no, so how? How I, um. How I worded it is. Um. It's one space per three seats. Rated capacity excluding seasonal outdoor seating or it would be one space per. You know, a hundred and eighty square feet or three hundred square feet. For a fast food restaurant, whichever is greater. So you can have a fast food restaurant that has a significant number of seats.
Yeah.
I'm not. I want to raise the question of whether we think it's a good idea to have, make a distinction between. Slow food and fast food and between having seats and not having seats.
Well, so that's why I, I did, I did, I did not.
You just did restaurant, you didn't put, okay, I, I wasn't sure exactly what you meant there, um, whether that was an addition. Yeah, okay.
So, no, so it's just, you have a restaurant, you either have seats or you don't have seats. Whichever, you know, whichever of these two calculations. Is greater, that's going to be your parking requirement, plus one space per employee on the largest shift.
Okay, right. And by putting in the whichever is greater, that is advantageous. I would like to avoid the situation where a restaurant puts in, um, one table with one seat. Just so that it can get a more advantageous parking ratio if possible, but having whichever is greater. Solves, I think solves that problem. As long as we get the square footage for. Correct. Although I will point out, we've been discussing lately whether we really should have so many parking regulations at all in town, um. For all manner of uses and except for the fairness issue that everybody else's, every other use is regulated. Maybe we don't want to regulate. Too much.
So based on, um. Be something similar to this.
Yeah. And so, yeah, to your, to your example, again, that's seven hundred and fifty square feet for that one. Uh, bubble tea example. No seats. So we would say that, yeah, that would be three spots. I don't, that's. Seems like it's a hard thing to gauge, but that seems relatively recent, plus employee parking seems reasonable for. Something that is as small and as sort of in and out as something like that would be.
Um, I just, I just don't know if this three hundred square feet is the correct number. What I'd probably like to do. Is, um, get the square footage of some of the existing, um, restaurants. And. And, and, and basically, like, the square footage of the ninety-nine, the ninety-nine had. Ninety-nine seats in it. Um. And I just, I don't know the square footage of the restaurant off the top of my head, but I, I'd like to, you know, kind of do that calculation just. To see where that the tipping point is between seats and no seats. And is three hundred square feet that number?
And, and the bubble tea was made a little bit larger, correct? Because they had to, they, they had to scale up the size, right? Wasn't that part of the discussion?
Um, they, and they ended up, um, being able to use, um. Space on the second floor for storage to increase the first floor because. They would have had to have twelve seats and would have then had to have a handicap accessible bathroom. Um, and so. Yeah, the, the square footage had to get larger because seats were going to be required. And once seats are required, it requires under the plumbing code to have a handicap accessible bathroom and it, and it, you know, it spirals.
By the size.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It requires the restaurant to be bigger than it had to be. Well, it, that they wanted it to be, I should say.
I actually like the idea of having a single square footage rather than an in-town, out-of-town square footage on the grounds that. If something is out well away from a, one of our village centers. Much as our new trolley is great, effectively people will have to drive to it. And if there's no parking, they just won't go. And it's not like they're going to be spilling over too much to the next restaurant or, or, um, gift shop next door because there won't be one.
Right, but I guess this, I mean, the Sudbury example is it's less restrictive in the town center.
Oh, right, which is why I think we should just use the. Less restrictive number, but do it everywhere.
But then in your scenario, there wouldn't be enough parking and people would bypass the place.
So, so.
Well, that would be the business.
So if everybody kind of agrees, if everybody agrees to this, you know, this kind of metric. Um, let me take some of the existing restaurants and, um. And, and, and do that calculation and see where it lands.
Yeah, that would be good.
And, and to Sue's comments, um. I, I'm. I'm not sure how you want me to.
Oh, um, I, I had sent you for an earlier meeting when you had asked Elizabeth. Um, do we need more explanation here? I had, um, dropped in some comments of additional possible. Explanation which I can. Bring up and read if you want, or you can find it. And, but maybe we don't need them. I don't know. Uh. There were three other items that I had thrown in in case we wanted them.
Um, no, I can, I can find those, sorry. Um, but I'm not sure how you want me to address, I mean, the. So. Well, there's, there are some existing fast food restaurants. That are legally non-conforming.
Oh, I didn't realize that we had legally non-conforming ones. In that case, I could withdraw my comment and you can go back to your original.
So, like New London, New London Pizza, I mean, they have. They have a few tables and a few seats in there, but not many. Same with Sorrento's.
Do count as fast food. You're right. And I, you even mentioned a previous meeting and I forgot, so. I withdraw my comment.
So I can say, um, that the. Existing, existing, you know, fast food restaurants in Concord. There's.
You can just go back to the original language. No evidence that a fast food restaurant, that fast food restaurants in Concord attract loiterers. Since we have more than one of them.
What's that?
I'm happy with it. I don't know how others feel.
Um. Okay, so I will do that research and come back with. Come back with a, a plausible explanation for this parking metric.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you for putting that together.
Um, you're welcome. Um, and then, so, um, two other items that are kind of being discussed internally. Um, one is, uh, for bylaw amendments, one is a, and a. At least, uh, a housekeeping item, um, that I found and I know, uh. Sue had been looking at other housekeeping items. I don't know if you, you wanted to present some of those at the next meeting, Sue. Or not, uh, but one has to do with the definition of affordable housing. And, um, while I think once the housing production plan comes out, um. You, that may help. Lead a discussion on whether, you know, other items in the zoning bylaw need to be updated and. In that, currently in that definition, it talks about, um. Units being included in the affordable housing inventory for the town of Concord that main, is maintained by. DHCD and it's actually the subsidized housing inventory, um, but. That's something so minor that, um, while it's on my list of amendments, I would probably say. Wait till after the housing production plan comes out and there's, you know, there may be other amendments to that actual definition. Um.
Well, now that you've nudged me along, Elizabeth, I'll try to get something for two weeks from now because I believe that there is a lot of spare room in our agenda. In our meeting two weeks from now.
No. No, two weeks from now you have, uh, two recommendations.
I got you.
Four recommendations to the boredom appeals, so.
That was facetiousness.
Oh, um, but.
But I shouldn't move along anyway.
While, while it's, while you, you have quite a few items on the agenda, um, you are running out of time. Um, you have only, uh, four meetings left until the warrant closes on January fourth. Um, so. Which, uh, Heather did put together the schedule for next week, uh, for next year. We will send it out. Um, typically, we don't try and have a meeting like. Right after the January first, um, but because the warrant closes on the fourth. Um, you know, I wanted to pull the board about get, having a meeting on January third.
Uh, wait a minute, does the, the schedule get made a whole year in advance? The expected schedule subject to change?
Um, yes, we, we do the planning board, board of appeals and historic districts commission meeting schedule. A year in advance.
I would like to make suggestion that when new people join the board, in mid-year, that schedule gets sent out. I would like to make suggestion that when new people join the board, in mid-year, that schedule gets sent out to them as part of joining.
Um, uh, we, we can do that, but um the schedule is always on the planning board's webpage. A minute it gets, um, we, it, the board accepts it and we do the scheduling.
Okay, silly me, I forgot to look at it there. I was looking at the town calendar. Of course, things don't get to the town calendar until much later.
So it does January third. Work for everybody?
I can, I am.
It's okay with me.
Yeah.
It's already in my calendar on auto repeat.
It's okay for me.
Okay, all right, well then I'll have um Heather finalize that um. We'll finalize that schedule and get it out to the board. So that does give you four meetings. You only have one meeting in December. Um. We, we, we try not to do extra meetings. You have a meeting on December thirteenth. So. And then it would be December third, and then the warrant closes that Wednesday, the fourth. So the other um item I wanted to just touch base with the board about is. Um, currently under uh temporary uses, uh there is a section that deals with. Fairs, bazaars, events, um and the Economic Vitality Committee. Uh, has been, you know, looking at ways to um. Spur economic vitality. And there was um a proposal um that somebody was working with a local. Um, restaurant to have an Oktoberfest event. Um, but it was a private entity working with that restaurant and currently. Under that section for fairs, bazaars, antique shows, suppers, dances. Um, it is um limited to educational, philanthropic or religious. Organizations or private lodges or clubs. Um. Currently, they're allowed to do any type of those events if it's held um within the building that they own. And uh for not more than three days. And they work with the police chief if they need um police supervision. And events which do not conform to the provision of being within the building or longer than three days, they need a special permit. So that section precludes some private entity or um. From doing any type of event in the community. Um, so I didn't know if the board wanted to um ask the Economic Vitality Committee. Um, there's the um Chamber of Commerce or the Concord Business Partnership. Uh, if they thought that an amendment to that section that allowed. Um, you know, basically anybody who wanted to, you know, hold. Uh, an event could go through the special permit process. Um, to do that event and. So I just, I just put that out there for the board to, to think about.
So uh I would be in su- support of that. My question is. It, is there a reason why they were not allowed? In the, were they, do you know historically, were they ever allowed at some point and then they were restricted or how?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think that's the way it's.
Always been.
Um. Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'd have to do research. I think that section's been in there for a while, but I'd have to figure out when it got adopted and. Um. So a lot of zoning bylaws get um first adopted as um knee jerk responses to something that happened. And so it, you know, whether there, you know, somebody did a large event and it. Everybody was upset about it and so let's put in a bylaw that says only, you know, schools, churches and nonprofits. Can have these type of events and only if it's in the building they own. Um. So I can, I can, I'd have to look into that.
Well, but think about it, I mean, perhaps the purpose was to support. The nonprofits to try to have those kind of events, okay? So, you know, it allows, you know. I don't know, the American Legion or the KFC or whatever group to do it. And therefore, it gives them revenue that perhaps they wouldn't be able to accomplish if everybody could do it. And I don't know, but and, and if, if a group wanted to have it October fest, why don't they buy the nonprofit to help, you know, support it?
Yep, yep, that's, you know, that's.
I, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't.
Yeah, no, that's, that's the other, you know, that's the other angle. I mean, that's what I think. Uh, Verro farm uh works with the Rotary Club.
Right.
To do their Oktoberfest.
Right.
But on the other hand, is every lodge or club necessarily nonprofit? And society reorganizes itself. It seems to me that people do a lot less with lodges and clubs than they used to. Um, for good or ill, and maybe. Maybe it's just too restrictive. I also wonder whether it was originally adopted as a complete prohibition. On anything except for educational, religious lodge or club and whatever other things I've forgotten. And then. Or, or just complete prohibition, then the special permit got added later. Um.
Usually what I've seen in the past with these things, when towns do these things is that they tried to ban it completely, but then someone went. But then the bake sale won't work, then this won't work. So then they carved out things that could, you know, were good uses of it. To let people, you know, to, to keep doing the lodge events and stuff, but. Again, times change. It's the same thing with, I'm sure. This probably predates it, but it's probably related to like the thing about how you couldn't, you couldn't hold event in town parking lots and sell alcohol. You know, that had been on the books for forty years and everyone was looking at it and found it really inconvenient now, so. Um, this is something that might have had.
This, yeah, this bylaw has, uh, originally it was just um educational.
God.
Brain is like a sieve.
While you're looking that up, I will say I, this talk about potential food trucks and Oktoberfest is very exciting.
Yeah, previously it was educational, religious, private lodge and clubs. Um, and what this was amended a few years ago, the board added philanthropic. Um, because it, it's like if the Concord Museum, you know, wanted. Yeah, because Concord Museum what had, you know, family movie night on the lawn. Well, technically they couldn't have it because it was outside and, um, and then added the section that, you know, the town of Concord. Um, any event held by the town of Concord is, you know, exempt from having to, you know. Go through a special permit process if they have a town event. Um, so, so I'm. With only four meetings left, um, I think, you know, there's a couple of questions have been raised and. Um, I think it would be good to ask the Economic Vitality Committee in the Chamber and the Concord Business Partnership. But not necessarily try to develop something in the next four meetings to get a warrant article submitted.
Good.
I, I agree.
It also seems pretty common when um one throws for the special permit process to have some advice in the bylaw for the planning board. With a ZBA for what basis on which you might decide yes or no, and I don't know if there is any such advice in the current version of the bylaw like. If it ends at a reasonable time of night and taking noise into consideration and um.
Um, well, every special permit, the um. The zoning board of appeals under section eleven six has to make those six findings.
Okay, so maybe the six findings would suffice, but I, I guess I have now more to add, the whole, the, the prohibition. Seems fishy to me, but it's short for this year.
All right, that's, that is all I had.
Great. All right. Moving on to uh liaison and town planner updates. Anybody?
Um, I can go first. CPC is in full swing. We're reviewing applications and um. I can provide an update on any of the ones that have been provided. There's Warner's Pond, which is going through some sort of. Change because the cost has escalated dramatically and they're not going back to the drawing board, but they're not sure. Um, you know, other, um, as you heard, there was a plan for. Concert, um, historic conservation, there's a, the open space plan that's been presented as one of them. Improvements to Bruce Freeman. Um, yeah, so it runs the gamut and it's been interesting, so it's all moving forward and there's nothing dramatic that impacts this board. So, that's my update sticking to.
Um, in terms of affordable housing, the select board uh did not support um. Or, or did not approve uh sending a letter of support for the um affordable housing project. Um Junction Village, Christopher Heights um to the state. Um, and the um developer has withdrawn um from the program and I believe that, so that. Project is essentially dead and I think now the monies are being uh. Potentially redirected to the Asabet River Program, um that, that seems to be the consideration there, so. Uh, that possibly will impact um going forward um the S H I count, but um. Will see I gather in the, in the spring. In terms of the census count.
Good. Anyone else? I guess I'll add that, uh, was it Elizabeth, is it next Wednesday, uh?
Yes.
Are going, speaking of the Concord Business Partnership, uh, we'll be going to one of their, their meetings and I guess we can. Sort of do as we were just talking about, kind of gauge the room on at least that one topic. Um. But, uh, yeah, so it's next Wednesday.
Good luck.
It's a pretty good group.
Any uh town planner updates, anything going on office wise, any changes?
Um. No, um, it's now the end of October, so um. Marsha retires in three months, so we're all starting to panic. Uh, Erin Stevens, um, our. Public Information Officer is transitioning. She will be the full-time transportation planner. And uh so she is helping me, the board uh will see um a draft. Uh, proposal to go out and solicit for a consultant to look at the parking. Requirements in the zoning bylaw, taking into consideration the, you know. In, at least in the village centers, the on-street parking and available public parking and um how that might factor into. Uh, the parking requirements, at least in those, um, those areas. Can, you know, compared to other areas and industry standards. Um, so she's working with me on putting that proposal together, which I'll present to the board. Um, not at the next meeting, but maybe the one after that.
Great, that sounds good. Do you know that this is a tangent to that? Do you know if in that new role will she be? Uh, also producing some sort of like biking or cycling. Like integrated network basically for the, for the town?
Yep, so that's actually uh one of her other um items, um she will be supporting the Transportation Advisory Committee. And uh she is working with the um town manager, putting together a proposal to. Um, also hire a transportation consultant to do a comprehensive transportation. Um, mobility plan, so looking at all the different, um, you know, connections. For um not just, you know, vehicle but pedestrian, bicycles, um. And multimodal and um looking at those connections and. Uh, developing a more comprehensive uh transportation plan that would then um. Be utilized for uh moving forward with, whether it's complete streets projects or. Uh, safe routes to school projects or, you know, other projects or grants. Uh, where typically, you know, the grant windows for different grants is very short, so if we have this comprehensive. Um, transportation and mobility plan, um we'd be able to put forth projects at a better, you know. You know. Wouldn't take so much time for town staff to try and uh pull together grant applications if, you know, they've already been vetted. Through a much more comprehensive plan, so that is something that she is also working on.
Excellent, yeah, that's good.
And if you haven't seen, we did um finally get an actual trolley for.
I saw it online and I saw it in real life.
Excuse me, and, and there is now a tracking app, so you can, you know, track and see where it is, so um. It seems to be getting a lot of use, the visitor, um, the visitor rate for this fall is um. You know, larger than almost pre-COVID, excuse me.
That's good. That's really good news. I'll let you recover from that before I ask a question about it. Uh, I was just gonna ask, do you know, um. It, like, as far as utilization, are they able to tell what portion is, you know, from. Tourist visitors versus like people in town that might also be using it? I know there's no, you're not, you just get on, right? So there's no.
Yeah, no, so they are, um, they are tracking, um, you know, the number of people that are, you know, getting on at different stops. Um, but they're, yeah, they're not able to track whether it's, you know, a resident or a visitor.
Yeah.
Well, if they could get a town volunteer to get, get on the trolley once a day and say, if you're local, raise your hand. If you're out of town, raise your hand. It wouldn't be very scientific, but it would be something.
No, I'm just excited that it's, that it's up and running and that, uh, I'm glad to hear that it's, it's being met with some success, so that's good.
All right. I have nothing else to add.
If there is nothing else, yeah, so uh I will move to uh general public comment. Is there anybody in here? Oh, there are some, okay. If you, if, if the public, oh, and yes, Pamela, go ahead.
Pamela, thirteen Concord Green, unit four. Is it okay, could you by any chance? Allow us to have more um responses than raising lower hand. Um, that way I wouldn't have to turn on my video and push my thumbs up. It would allow us to participate in the discussion without disturbing you by doing the little thumbs up icon.
You mean if you, if. You have a question?
No.
Pamela, um, so, so that is a, a town um Zoom policy. That those um types of, um, what are, what are they called, Heather?
Like reactive icons.
Reactions, react.
Yeah, those.
Of falls and so forth.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that is a, a town policy, um, that's been established that.
Because, for example, the light board allows us, several other boards do.
I. With what it is in person where we're, you know, you're not supposed to applaud or do anything of that nature.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how their Zoom meetings are established, but for our Zoom account, um, those have been restricted. So I don't know if it's. So I don't know if it's, I I can't speak for other boards and committees, but um as Nathan said, that's. Um, you know, that's something that's been restricted for our meetings. And and I think Nathan, um, your comment that it's, you know, people. You know, if you were at a public meeting, you wouldn't be able to clap or. Um. You know, whether it's. Smiley face or boo face or whatever, so.
And being in other Zoom meetings where that is allowed, it can get kind of distracting if uh. Yeah, so. I understand what you're trying to say, Pamela, just so you can give some sort of, you know, on the fly feedback, but uh. Yeah.
Yeah, because it's not like it makes a sound or any kind of distracting thing. I don't think it's the same as applause.
I think I personally would find it distracting. If reactions were popping up all over.
Like I said, I think it's just it's consistent with the, you know, in-person policy, so. It, that part makes sense to me for for that. But I hear what you're saying, yeah.
And I want to say thank you for putting links to. The supporting materials into the agenda because it allows us to find them easily. Really appreciate you why you do that.
You're welcome. We'll try and do that more often.
Thank you.
All right, not seeing any other uh public comments or questions. I believe that uh brings our meeting to a close, our meeting for October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Uh, is adjourned. Have a good night.
Have a good Halloween.
Night, everyone.
Good night.